I'll call the meeting to order. This is the June regular meeting of the Urban Renewal District Board for Manitou Springs. Those present, Ann Nichols? Here, present, Farley McDonough, I see that she's online.
I'm here.
Okay. Barb Winter, not here at this point. Pat Stitzman? I'm here as vice chair. Alan Delwich and Alan Gregory?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. First order of business is public comment. Not sure where to look here under, there's four participants, but I don't see who they are. Is anyone? Yeah.
Alan, David Neville. And I think we're the four.
Okay. I'll seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Kind of a motion or comments?
Second.
Motion to approve by Pat, seconded by Ann. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Financial reports, Ann?
Yes, so last night at 5:20, I got draft financial statements for April, March and April. And obviously way too late to distribute and still in draft form, so. Halting gets a little backed up during audit season, but I will have them in probably May for the July meeting. I would just report that when we get April's, it will show that the sales tax, property tax revenue through the end of April was 106,08,986 out of a budget of 286. So it's, I think people are paying in halves. Clearly, they didn't pay in April in full. But hopefully we'll start getting more. So that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, I don't think any action is needed on this.
No.
Thank you, Ann. Note that Barb Winter joined the meeting during the discussion of the financial reports. Moving on to old business, the first item, El Colorado Lodge, Elektra?
All right, old business. El Colorado Lodge has extended their closing till the first of July. I've spoken to them and they will be applying for a facade improvement grant in August. I think they had to extend it because they were already booked out for the, a good portion of the summer months. And that's my only update for El Colorado.
Okay, any questions or comments? Fine, let's move on to the LaFon update and letter. First of all, Pat raised some issues or wants to raise some issues about the agreement. And let's answer, have those questions answered first, if that's appropriate. And David and probably Ann probably have to help us with those answers. Pat?
Good morning, all of them. I read the loan agreement and I'm sure that everybody else in this group has. I had two interpretations, having dealt with loan agreements for the last 40 years. One, I wondered if this particular paragon was a franchise office. If you look it up online, there are several paragon realties and I'd like to know the answer to that.
I believe I can answer that. They are not a franchise office. It's a father and son and they basically have two different offices because the son lives in Denver and the father lives in, I believe, Indiana. Is that right, David?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're from Indiana.
Yes.
So they're not a franchise office, a paragon?
No.
All right. My second question on the loan agreement was, and John and I talked about this briefly because I was confused, that Jim Reese, who is the executive director of the ERA, signed it as the secretary.
I have not seen that.
Under the statute, the executive director is the secretary.
Okay, so when you, David, reviewed this, usually there's an imprimatur by the attorney. I didn't see that either.
No, there's not one. I don't think there is one.
No, there is not one. Could there have been one?
Um, no.
Okay, explain it to me again. Why, like I'm in kindergarten, why, why wouldn't I see that?
We don't normally do that. It's not required. I mean, can you show me where it's required?
Uh, no, it's just in most loan documents, it's in there.
I'm not, not in my experience.
Okay, well, on my side. Okay, my last piece is kind of, maybe we should put this off because Elektra had some pieces, some scenarios that she wanted to discuss. Is that correct?
Oh, I didn't want to discuss them. I was just basically laying out what possibilities. They weren't, they weren't necessarily for discussion. They were just, the TIF is an agreement that it will be repaid and I was, I mean, if you need, David can also walk you through kind of the historic context if you need, but no, they weren't necessarily up for discussion because Paragon has done at nauseam, I don't know how many iterations, maybe six iterations of possibilities. And then these are additional iterations and all of those iterations have either fallen through because natural grocers didn't need a store there because of the number of rooftops, because financially it wasn't feasible under the, under the, it wasn't feasible under the density and the height requirements because they couldn't make it pencil, which meant that they were going to lose money on this project. And the third reason and what the, the letter is about really is the rejection of the Lytech CHAFA application, which then also takes affordable housing off the table. So I was looking at additional possibilities because I believe that the goal of the URA board and the goal of Paragon, and they have acted really, they've done everything possible that they can, they've acted is to develop the property, not to leave it vacant. So that's what I believe. So that was looking at additional possibilities, not necessarily. I said in the, in the number, we could have it up for discussion at a future meeting. But really, it's not really up for us to decide. It's up for Paragon to put together the deal that will actually work so that they're not losing money, which they already are at this point on, on, on where they are in the, in the deal, so.
I appreciate that explanation. That was a good one. I appreciated your scenarios. And, and I agree with you that it's up to them. And when we get to their letter, we'll see. But they've already been denied by Manitou Code. They've already been denied by CHAFA, correct? And they have three non-working scenarios at least. Is that correct?
The scenarios have been denied by the planning commission. There was a scenario for podium housing that I saw in the files with retail in the front. There was a scenario for parking for the city that was denied. There was a scenario for, for attainable housing or market rate housing. And then there was a scenario for affordable housing. There was a scenario for a retail store. There was a scenario for a drive-through coffee. There's been numerous scenarios.
Okay, good. Because in this loan agreement, and I don't know about the contract, there are no performance standards. So I'm kind of worried about that a little bit because this is still dirt at three years.
David can walk you through the history of that, too.
Okay.
And I know he's got to leave at some point soon, so maybe if you.
Go ahead, David.
Uh, sure, there's a lot of history here and I think the bottom line is Debbie is really explaining very, very well the goal of the URA, which was to get a revenue generating asset out of the ground. And for the benefit of the city, and ideally, you know, there's, there's more revenue in a, in a commercial or mixed use development that produces sales tax as well. So that was several years ago when this was put into place. That was the idea of a potential mixed use. And, you know, the concern was that Paragon wasn't going to act quickly enough. And so we put some deadlines in here. And I think that we've seen from Paragon that they've acted, you know, they, they've come forward with several development plans and which have not met community support. And I have not been involved, so, you know, I've heard that secondhand. But the idea was, of course, partner with the URA to get the blighted asset of LaFon Motel remediated with the asbestos and all that entailed to stop the blight. So that mission has been accomplished, but the development of the asset has not yet come to fruition. So it's not for lack of trying, I think, from, from Paragon's perspective. But there are deadlines and the deal was structured such that if they didn't meet the deadlines, the URA has a lien on the property and could exercise remedies. And, and I think that's where Paragon is, in their latest letter, asking for some relief to try again. So, and I haven't been asked to opine on that. Is there a specific question that you had maybe about the history? There's a long history here and I don't want to take too much time, so I think we've.
What, what is the next? What, what is the next deadline?
August, I believe. Three, one years of extension.
Well, one has already been used, right?
Been used. The next one is, comes to in August.
Okay, and that's the, what they've addressed in the letter, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct, okay.
Yes, my understanding is the letter requests that we amend the agreement to, number one, continue to have three extension periods, but to expand those to two years from one year. And that each of the two-year expansion deadlines would require a payment of $25,000. So the, the amount of payment would remain the same, but the timeframe from which they would have to perform is extended by three years potentially. That's my understanding. Am I correct in that, David?
Uh, yes. Yeah, they, they wanted to push out the final deadline to 2030.
So as I look at this, we have three options. Option one, number one is to do nothing. Leave the agreement in place as it is. Option number two is to essentially wait a year and go through the one-year extension and then reevaluate. And option number three is to consider a amendment to the agreement as proposed or similarly than proposed by Paragon. If we choose the latter, we would need to instruct David to prepare an amended agreement, which we would then formally review at a future meeting. So is there more discussion or comments? Ann?
Yeah, I mean, I'll weigh in here. I think as has been indicated, our intent, the reason we did this agreement was to get the blighted asset, or whatever we'd call it, the blighted building, the, out of there to clean up the site and to get it developed. We advanced TIF that we expected over a reasonable period of time based on a reasonable assumption of what they might build there would be generated to the advantage of either the URA, and clearly it's not going to be the URA, given that we no longer get the sales tax TIF, but the advantages to the city and the other taxpaying entities. And I think that's still our intent is, we're not trying to get our money back. That, that would be crazy in my view. What we're trying to do is incent the developer to develop the property effectively and appropriately. And everybody has said there have been considerable obstacles to that, not the least of which is our zoning code, which they may address directly. But they have, they have shown willingness to go above and beyond to try to get this done. I don't think there's any point in trying to get rid of them and get someone else, which would be what would occur after the three years lapse. And I think they're getting concerned about the three-year period and that we ought to approve what they asked.
Well, and I'd make one comment. I think the last thing we want is to foreclose on this property and be in the, in the position of, of some level of ownership of this property. We want a developer to develop this to the benefit of the city.
I agree with you, John, and I think that we want it developed. I do not want that dirt lot for another five years. That's what I don't want. And I want an incentive to Paragon to move forward. I think that it's important that with our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Manitou, that we get revenue moving. So far, if we would have put this $2 million in any kind of small, in a savings account for crying out loud, we would have made a little less than $200,000 in interest. We've made $25,000. And I think that that's maybe reflective of their, that they're trying, okay? They're just trying, that's it. But I need to see a little bit more progress here. And I want to somehow incent them to move a little bit quicker and move this dirt and get something on the ground.
I'd like to say something if you don't. So the incentive also needs to be a collaboration with the city and with the planning department, not the department, but the planning commission. And with the entire, with everybody working together to get this to happen because they have presented numerous development plans. And I think the goal of the URA is to remediate blight. And that blight has been remediated by the removal of the LaFon Hotel and the removal of the Dillon Hotel, both investments by the city. And both substantial investments that the, the, the people who profited the most from that were the people who were, the hotels were purchased from. There's probably several other properties that have blight, the one that is burnt, which we still haven't dealt with. But I think that there's substantial goals that have been set and accomplished through the URA board and through the URA, which is to remediate and remove those, what are they called? Assets, whatever you said, Ann. Blighted assets, right? So then the next step is to truly collaborate with Paragon because they are acting in good faith to find a solution to development, because I think nobody wants to see that as an empty lot. And they did, David did tell me that at one point, they did offer it up to the city as parking to, to, to solve the parking issue within the city until it was developed. So that has been on the table as well. So there have been a number of things on the table. And I, I guess, from the URA board and looking at historical documents, because obviously I wasn't here, I see, and my understanding of urban renewal authorities, is that the URA board has worked very hard in good faith as well as the developer that they found, that Jim found, to remediate, which was done, the remediation was done. The buildings were taken down, both the Dillon as well as the LaFon. And then the next step is to bring in some development. I, I also do believe there are very insinuating circumstances, too, that must be considered. Number one, the development code was changed directly after they purchased the property. So they had other plans. And number two, the other piece is COVID and the cost of building. I know with my building project, the cost has increased by almost 800%. I mean, not just 50%, like it has gone up and up and up. And so the cost to build affordable housing, the cost to build market rate housing, the cost to build commercial has increased substantially and I believe will continue to do so with tariffs. So there are a number of insinuating circumstances that have nothing to do with the performance of the developer because I believe they've acted in good faith. That's what I have to say.
John, other comments? Sure, Alan?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to address a few things, Elektra. First of all, the, you said there needs to be collaboration with the planning commission. I think that's erroneous thinking. It's not, the planning commission is strictly responding to what the zoning code says. We can't sit there and arbitrate and legislate. I say that over and over there. Every meeting, we interpret the code. We don't make the code. The, the code we have now is reflective of a two-year process. It expresses what the community asked for, what the community expectation was. As far as you made the statement that the zoning code changed after they purchased the property, yes, it did. At the time of purchase, the max density for that parcel was 15 dwelling units per acre. The new zoning code increased it to 20 units per acre with a bonus. If you look in 180214, if they did affordable housing, they would have a 25% increase in density. In fact, they could go to 53 units if it's deed restricted.
Can you cite that again, just because we've been trying to find that?
Okay, this is 180214, measurements. A3, residential density may be increased by up to 25% above the permitted density listed herein if 25% or more of the residential units provided or rented or sold at a price that is affordable as determined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to a household earning 100% of area median income or less as determined by HUD. All affordable units shall be documented by a legal covenant to be deed restricted for a minimum of 30 years. Let me point out, typically with deed restriction, they talk about being 30% of area median income or 60% for owner occupied. So actually, this is a fairly generous spin on affordability. So I don't know if that would help with CHAFA if they resubmitted. Maybe they should investigate and find out what CHAFA's expectations are before investing another 50K or 100K. But it may be that there is an approach there. But, you know, this, unfortunately, I, I don't know where the ball was dropped that they only asked for 43, when they could have asked for 53. But, you know, by the time I saw it, it was already like, you know, three days till submission. So it was a little late to change.
Other comments? Barb?
I just think hearing all discussion and the three options that you stated, John, I would think that perhaps with some of this, these issues in play, that could be reinvestigated. Elektra and others, that maybe we go with the middle consideration of, under our current agreement, continuing one more year as agreed upon and we revisit it.
I would support that, Barb. I don't want to change the agreement.
I agree as well.
Other comments?
I guess.
Do we need a motion?
We go ahead, what they suggested. But in the, I think if they understand, and I think they're understanding that from Elektra, that we are committed to our original purpose, which is that this property be redeveloped in an appropriate fashion. And if that includes having to go to council and get a change in the zoning code, so be it. That may be the approach they need to take. But I think they need to hear from us that we have not lost faith in the fact that they're going to get this done and that whatever it takes to facilitate that, we will do. And if this is an interim step that we've already gotten, three people said they're going to agree. So I think that's okay, but I think they need to hear loud and clear that we stand behind them and we expect them to perform as we did when we entered into this agreement.
Other comments? I don't think that we need a motion if we're not going to change the agreement. But I could be wrong. If there's a parliamentarian, I'll take it.
Does Farley have a comment? I know Farley had, I just want to make sure Farley can hear and if she has a comment. Farley?
I am hearing the conversation. If this is an agenda item, I thought that we would have to make the motion because they're making the request, but I could be wrong about that. I'm in favor of supporting Paragon until they give us a reason not to. And for me, that means granting them the extension that they are asking for.
Well, I, I would, I would agree with Farley and Ann's comment. I think that we need to strongly encourage Paragon to keep going and say that we do support their efforts to redevelop. support their efforts to redevelop this property. I don't want to see it vacant. I don't want to own it. I don't, I don't want to be in a position a year or two from now where we still have either a vacant property or no active development proposal on the table. And so, with that, I guess I'm ready for, I think we probably ought to have a motion because it seems to be a split board. I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll start by moving that we approve what was requested.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Farley second.
Motion and a second to approve Paragon's request, which I interpret to mean that we would instruct David to modify the agreement and have it, we would have it then before us at the next meeting for discussion and review and perhaps approval. Okay, I'll call for the question. Wait, 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 wait. Can we discuss? Sure. Go ahead. Yeah, I, I think, I, I understand sending a good message to Paragon that we want to support them. I think relaxing the agreement now is just, you know, it's like, you know, there's a classic thing in software development, if you extend your deadline, it'll still be missed. This is seen over and over and over. Extending deadlines doesn't get the job done. It just lets everybody relax and take more time and nothing changes. And, and we just, all we've done is move the deadline into the future. You know, there are classic studies of project management over the years, and this is what always happens, if you extend the deadline, you can be sure nothing's going to happen. Right now, with the two-year deadline, we can always extend it next year, as Barb suggested. By extending it now, we're just saying, oh, yeah, sure, you know, let's go as we are and we'll keep finding excuses, or maybe not excuses, maybe we'll luck out and find something. I think it's the wrong move to make that change right now.
Other comments?
I agree with you, Alan. I think a year is sufficient since it's already been three years. And the second piece is it sets up an opportunity next year to revisit this without having to go through amendments and go through whatever it is. They have also, Paragon has now received new information regarding the code, which I appreciated you bringing up. They have new information. If they want to go to council and talk about it, that's fine. But I think we need to stay the course. And they have another year for the next 25,000 in August. At least, something is going on. And that may incentivize them to move more promptly.
I'd like to say something if I could.
Sure. Farley?
Yes. Um, I feel like what I'm hearing is that there is, well, the implication is that, that they're not going to move on the property as they have more time. They're losing money to this property. They are not generating any income on this property. They don't want to sit on the property. They want to move the property. They've been getting blocked. I feel like giving them the extension that they need shows that we support them, support the project, that we are a good partner, and further gives them the time to continue to try to figure out how they're going to get out of this. They didn't, this is not what they wanted either. They didn't go into this wanting to sit on this property for three years. And they have put forth several plans, and none of them have worked. And I know that they will continue to do so, because they don't want to be on it anymore. They don't want it anymore. That's all.
Other comments? Alan?
Yeah, I just suggest, you know, I, I'm not sure they've been losing money. They've been spending money as they committed to when they signed up for this agreement. In fact, they rushed us into the agreement because they wanted to do a 1031 exchange, which a conservative estimate is they've probably sheltered well over half a million dollars in tax savings and benefits, which continues as long as they're hanging on with this. So it's not like they've lost money.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, I do not think that we should be making assumptions about their financials. They're not here to defend themselves. We have no idea what their situation is.
That they are losing money. And I'm just challenging that, that they are spending money as developers do. And there, there are benefit pros and cons when you get into a development agreement. And, and it's not all negative for them. There are positives too, as this goes on. I don't, I don't think it matters one way or another to us whether they are making money, losing money, or what their financial situation is. The issue is what's best for the urban renewal district. And I happen to think that the extension benefits us. So if there are any other comments, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of the proposal to accept the extension agreement and direct David to redraft the agreement, please signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Farley votes aye.
Okay, well, that's four in favor. Those opposed?
Alan Gregory votes aye.
Okay, three opposed. So that motion carries. And David, I assume you have your marching orders?
Understood.
Thank you. And can we expect to have that for a July meeting, assuming we have a July meeting?
Uh, yes, I'll work with Elektra and we can put together a draft and, and work with Paragon to get them on board. That would be my suggestion. And then we, we bring it to the board.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Crane. Elektra?
The update, hold on one second, let me get to that. Okay, so this is the synopsis from Audrey. The U R A approved funding, new art for the backs of the signs in Fields Park and three new signs behind the baseball fields. Then Parab approved funding for two more signs behind the baseball fields pending a zoning change from open space to parks. That zoning change did not happen, but Parab approved funding for the backs of the signs in Fields Park instead, which if the U R A funding stays at the approval amount, would allow us to use the same money for two additional signs at Fields Park with the same outcome as would have happened if the zoning change would, would have taken place. So, basically, to clarify that, they were going to change that little section of land by the Marcy Morrison Bridge to parks from open space and did not perceive that it would have any issue, when in fact, there was a community member who took great issue with that because they didn't want it to become developed in any way. They wanted it to remain more raw, open space. And so what Audrey is proposing is that what we have already said that we would help with funding those signs, that the location is changed because of zoning. Is that clear? Okay.
Any comments, questions? Next item, streetscape planters, streetscape and banners.
Okay. Barb, did you want to tackle this one? Since you've been on the emails?
I can speak to the planters.
Yes.
And as a founding volunteer of that project, we're struggling with our volunteerism a bit, because it, it isn't directed in the same way that it started out through, what was the organization called previously? What, what Crane was before? And, and, and Becca was coordinating. So, we're, we're struggling a little bit, but I, I was on vacation, but as soon as I got home, I took it upon myself to go over to Rick's and talk to the owner there, Rick's Garden Center, and asking for a bid, in particular, for a similar design of our planters, which I would hope all of you felt that we did a good job last season. I thought they, they looked quite good, actually. And so, in that regard, my conversation, my expectation with all things costing a little bit more, I would request of the U R A a, a grant of $1,000 at this time. And we're awaiting our estimate from Rick's. He pledged he would get me a, a number this week. And then we'll figure out the mechanics of going forward to accomplish getting that done with whomever remains in our volunteer corps. I think we might be down a person or two. So if you know anyone that might like to participate with us, we would appreciate it. But the request is for $1,000. And I think what I did with Anne last year, as the invoice came in, it actually came in under the amount we requested. So we would certainly not exceed our grant, and, and we would certainly not spend all of our grant if necessary, other than as necessary.
Comments, questions, motion?
I make a motion to approve a $1,000 grant to whatever group they're calling themselves these days. The Pollinator Group, yes. I love the planters. And you anticipated my question regarding the invoice. So thank you for that. But I make a motion on the floor to approve.
And I would ask, as a comment, we need clarification from the city on whether we're still part of this pollinator district in the state, in terms of how we're reporting our efforts. So I'm, I'm a little fuzzed about where that landed. And that relationship was coordinated through the Butterfly Pavilion up north. So, and it also required us to keep statistics on our maintenance of the planters, our watering cycles. But my question is about this pollinator district.
Yeah, my understanding is that's a permanent designation unless we violate our agreement with them. But I would recommend perhaps that Elektra could talk with Jillian, she's the city's point of contact for that.
Would you do that, Ellen?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion by Pat, seconded by Anne, to approve the grant not to exceed $1,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Farley?
Approved.
Oh, who, who made the second? Just, sorry.
Anne.
Anne, okay. I just thought, I didn't hear her name.
Okay, is there some streetscape?
Banner.
Banner discussion?
Uh, yeah, so I did reach out to them. I reached out to the city and the city said that they can't lower the banners until they're not so busy during the summer. So they will lower them in September. That's the update.
Okay.
That's the only update. They also said that they would water the planters, but then within the board, there was discussion and somebody said that they had reached out to the city and the city said they wouldn't water the planters. So I know that was a ma, a massive headache. And so I'm going to try to clarify that in addition to the Potter, the Pollinator Group too.
Well, and part of our expectation is that we do water the planters. It would be a benefit to us if somebody within the city would be helpful, but if that isn't going to occur, we assume that's part of our duties, so.
Are we, are we done with this item? I'd like to make one additional question. There was a project, and I'm not sure where it's gone, to create a district, a maintenance district within the city that might include the U R A and citywide. I don't know the status of that. Is it, is it D O A or is there an ongoing work on that or what? Does anybody know the answer?
It's a downtown development authority discussion, but I don't remember a maintenance district discussion.
Okay, I thought, well, maybe, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that the D D A discussion included a maintenance component, which would include the U R A.
I have a comment. This is Farley. That, that, that group is no longer meeting. The city indicated that they did not have, that they had expended the amount of money that they committed to hiring the consultants and were not going to move any further with it.
Okay.
But I don't think that that's been made official. But that's what we were trying.
We move on to the executive director report. Elektra?
Okay, I submitted the executive director report. Hold on one second, where is it? Because I sent it a while ago. I apologize. Okay, so this month, I worked on trying to get some movement at Park Row and, and following what was going on and trying to see if they had permits and just what was going on there to try to sort of maintain some kind of understanding of it. I do see that they are moving ahead with some construction. They were doing ripping out floors and whatnot. So I'm assuming they got their demo permits. But again, I, I haven't actually seen any plans submitted or anything like that, so I'm not sure how that's going ahead. I know that John still is interested in purchasing that project and has put off any kind of like visioning or anything until he gets the arcade under control because he's got too many eggs in his baskets with that and then taking care of elderly parents. He's the only person I know who's like mid to late 60s who still has his parents, which is amazing to me. But, so he is still interested in that, still interested in looking at that. Farley did bring up that she thought it was probably inappropriate for, for him to do a visioning session if he doesn't own the property. And I wanted to bring that up as a point within, within the, the U R A board too, to see like what people thought. I know we've done visioning for brownfields for communities and for cities when people didn't own the properties necessarily. With, with, Dola does that and K S U does that, and I know that because I'm one of their consultants. But I just wanted to know what the, what the board thought, because, I mean, it, it does cross a line to, to envision someone else's property. So I, I just wanted to know what your thoughts were on that, because it would help direct me with the actions. Yeah, Pat?
I think, I agree with you. John has enough to do, John Wise. So let's let it kind of die a natural death until we have more information on what they're doing with the Park Row situation. I do not know what that demo is about. I stopped there the other day. It's coming apart, as I understand it. So I appreciate you looking into that.
Yeah.
But let's just postpone the visioning right now until we have more information.
That sounds fair enough. Does anyone else have any comments? Or, I mean, I think that's a fair.
I think John can do whatever John wants to do.
Exactly. And.
I think John will do whatever he wants.
Yes, okay. Yes. Okay, so then the next thing is, I have been in contact with El Colorado Lodge on a number of things. First, the facade improvement grant and sort of tracking where they are on that sale. And that's going to be something I'd love for you to, to, once they do, the sale is through in July, it would be wonderful to have some press around that because their visioning is fantastic. And what they want to do with it is wonderful, and I'd love to see them succeed. And so that would be something for press, since you're here, Carol. Thank, thank you. Yeah.
Is there a date on that? So I can mark the calendar?
Not, I, I, they said they're closing like in July sometime. They didn't really have a clear definition of when. But I think it's really exciting for the U R A and for this, this section and for the city of Manitou, quite honestly. So that, I, I've reached out to them about that. I've reached out to them also, I know that they had some headache over the cost of their pool. And, and so I gave them the contact for Buffalo Lodge. I gave them the contact for the Little Dipper and for the, what is that other pool? The Valley Swim Club. For, for those kind of subscription things, because there is a real lack of those kind of outdoor pools in Manitou during the summer. So, and that doesn't really compete with our pool, which is indoor, or it's a kiddie pool. So that could help them with some of the funding schedules. And then also gave them the contact for the Rainbow Inn across the street that just redid their pool, or right down the street. So, worked with them for that. And then talked to them about the facade improvement grant, gave them the application, walked them through some of that, talked to them about that. And they will be applying for that one building that is, the stucco's like falling off. And they will be applying for that one building that is the stucco's like falling off. And any kind of stucco repairs on the backside. Uh, and I don't know what else they'll be applying for, but basically whatever faces the street, just trying to update it. And maybe, who knows what fits into that, that amount of money. Okay, and then the Dillon property, um, from what I've seen, the construction has continued. We did have some discussion that has continued with the Parks Board regarding Creekside Trail behind there. And they're still very interested in pursuing Dog Park on the backside of where the Dillon property is and some trails. So that's underway and there's been some other discussions since then with that group that I'll, I'll put into new business at, at that time in the meeting. Then also the LaFunt site, I tried, looked at alternative redevelopment scenarios, tried to, and, and I'm still working on some of those to see if we can try to bring something to fruition there because I think it's incredibly important, as was stated earlier in the meeting. Spoke with and met with Audrey, then was trying to track the streetscape enhancements. You sort of followed all of those things. Also continued with the discussions and the urban, urban renewal oversight kind of meetings with the, the D C I U R A collaborative call. I didn't realize that David Neville, who's our attorney, is also the attorney for the city of Colorado Springs, Urban Renewal Authority. And so we are collaborating and speaking with Uriah Walker about the Santa Fe Hotel. That is the, I think we have kind of three remaining blighted properties that need to be taken, need to be remediated in some way at some point, working with the owners. And that is one, but it's half in Colorado Springs and half in Manitou. So we started discussions, but it was just mostly discussion. At this point, there's not anything that went anywhere. And I've reached out to, I don't know what to call them. They're the Natural Healing Place, the place next door. Yeah, and the, the, the place we gave the stucco grant to, they also would like to do a grant at some point later in the, in the year. And I need to reach out some more and, and set up a meeting with them. And new project kind of thing. Sky is still interested in a music festival proposal. And there was a grant that came together that was very interesting that could fund that. There is a match for that, but the major use conditional permit issue with the planning board is something that is a big hurdle for him to cross. So, um, yeah, and Ellen, did you have something to say about that for sure?
Yeah, I was curious why they thought they needed a major conditional use. Cause there, there is something called a major temporary use, which it's like a one step process rather than three steps.
Oh, that would be fantastic. So major temporary use permit, which is less onerous.
Yeah, it's like for a one time thing. For, for example, the Rainbow Falls parking at Higginbotham, they have a one, they have that type of setup. I believe that the bike rental place next to the liquor store also does that.
A major single use?
Major temporary use.
Temporary.
And the idea is if it became something they would do over and over, then they would go through the major conditional use process, which is like a planning commission hearing and two city council hearings. But the major temporary use, simply they fill out the application, fill, fill all the squares and it goes before the planning commission.
Oh, that's fantastic. That could really solve and help remediate some of the, the issues in the stumbling blocks, so. And then also looking at still planning some monthly U R A walks. This month has just gotten clogged. I'm going on vacation too, which I wanted to bring up later on for the first time in five years. So, um, which I will bring up later too, so. And I may, I'll bring that up in a minute. So, and then upcoming work plan, just working with Ann. Is there a, a question that I have is, is a, an annual report that we need to put together? Anything of that nature? No, okay, that was a question I had. And, um, and then going forward. So that's sort of my, my executive report for the, the last portion of last month.
Okay.
I'll just mention that in terms of, we would typically have to do an audit, but because we're a component unit of the city, the city includes us in the annual audit, which they have gotten an extension for. So it will be done by September. But that's our only really annual requirement.
Okay, so September there will be a, um, okay.
Okay, it looks like we have wandered into new business from the executive director report. Is there anything else under new business that we haven't covered, Elektra?
Yes, there's a couple of things. One is the, we were, let's see, am I under new business? Okay, so, um, I already talked about the Dog Park, the Music Festival, regional collaborations, the U R A walks. So we were invited to the first ever, once I reached out to the Buffalo Lodge, as well as reaching out to the Parks and Open Space Board. We were invited to the first ever, that's what they call it, people centered Colorado Springs Film Festival, which is Saturday, July 26th at the Buffalo Lodge. And it's Pac-Man is the group that is supporting and, and putting it together. It's, um, but so they're, they're looking for connected, more safe, mobile Manitou Springs. And they asked if we would sponsor or if we would attend or if, and they asked me to sit on a panel too. So I thought, I, they asked me to bring it before you if we wanted to sponsor. The sponsorship is like eighty dollars or something. It's not a ton and it will allow for a number of tickets. So the board, board could go to. Let's see, where is that? Yeah, so that's basically that sponsorship is, is, do we want to sponsor it? It's at the Buffalo Lodge, which is right outside our border, but it is with Pac-Man. It is with our, our other kind of partners within the community. And it's not a massive ask. So let me look it up. I'll tell you how many tickets.
I would, I would support that. I think it's great. The Bicycle Resort has really stepped up. And in terms of what's happening at the Bicycle Resort, the Manitou Springs reunion is the end of June. So we're going to be very busy. And Bicycle Resort has sponsored that reunion dinner. So I'm happy to support them.
That's, I take that as a motion. Is there a second?
I'll make a motion to support Bicycle Resort with an eighty dollar grant.
Second.
Ann, second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries.
So we will be a sponsor for them. Fantastic. Okay. And, um, and then the other thing that I was going to bring up is if I inadvertently scheduled when I'm gone, I thought for some reason July 8th, don't ask me why, I was their first meeting in July. So in July, July 1st, I will be in Iceland. And I can run a meeting from there, but I prefer not to.
July 1st, I'll be in Paris and I don't intend to.
Thank you.
Any meeting.
Okay, and we don't have anything majorly pressing until August. And Farley suggested it. So anyway, can we, so can we postpone our July meeting till August? Okay.
Fine, fine with me. Okay. We will not meet in July and we will then meet in, uh, on August 5th. Okay, is there, I guess we're done with new business? Unless there are any comments or questions? City Council Liaison Report, Nancy?
Sure. Let's see, we voted on the buses to start, uh, get rid of bus route 36 starting in 2026, extend the peak season for the incline bus route 33 from, I think April to March or something early, a month earlier and a month later than normal since the data shows that the ridership is, that's when it's the most. So we extended it. And we voted to make route 33 or route three completely free, starting in 2026. And we're sharing that cost with the Colorado Springs and it'll go from Manitou all the way down to the Bus Depot in Colorado Springs. So people will have free access all year long. I mean, in the summer it's free anyway, but it'll be all year long now that it'll be free. So that's exciting. We voted to increase the EMS fee, the, basically the ambulance pickup fee to be in line with what other ambulance services are doing. So it's about two hundred, two hundred dollars more for ALS pickup. We voted to increase the convenience fee for parking by forty cents. Convenience fee is primarily down on Manitou Avenue where you'll see the, anytime anyone uses the Q R codes, there's extra fee for that. I don't know why, so that people will be charged that extra forty cents because it was fairly significant when you added it all up. And we voted to raise the rate in zone three, which includes the Dillon from, I think it was two dollars a day to five dollars a day for parking. And we also voted to decrease, well, we'll vote tonight, the final vote will be tonight to decrease the marijuana tax from ten percent to five percent. So those are kind of the big things that we're looking at, thanks, or that we've done. Unless there's any questions.
I have a question about Dillon. How, how will people get downtown? How, there's, is there going to be a shuttle or something?
There will be, the shuttle will start in twen, in the, in this fall. But this summer there will not be a direct, it will not stop at the Dillon. But the Mountain Metro will start at this fall.
So the, the facility will open sometime in July, I assume now it's been delayed.
June, July timeframe, yeah.
But if people park there, how do they get anywhere?
Good question. They'll have to walk somewhat.
There's, the shuttle stop is right on the other side. It's still going to stay at Fields Park, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's about a block over, block and a half. It'll be exercise, it'll be good.
No, but there needs to be some information about that.
Yeah, and there will be publication of these changes once it's finalized and implemented.
John brings up a great point. We need signage over there. We, I know that the East End neighborhood uses the shuttle a lot. And we talked to all kinds of visitors who say, how do I find the shuttle? Well, they, we need to have some signs there at Fields Park. Go this way, look for a brown sign. Has that been talked about at funding for council, streets department?
Not at council, but I will bring it up that U R A has, would like to see additional signage down there.
A great sign would be at the parking for where the ball field is, because that's where people are parking, where the playground is and on the other side of the pool, they're also parking at the pool. Right, so if we could have signs, that'd be great.
Also regarding signage, it would be super awesome and helpful. And this has come up numerous times in discussions with many people for just an overall tourist sign of Manitou as well as like shuttle services and trails. That would be fantastic. And I did speak with the, with the, yes.
Yeah.
About, not, not the board, but a couple of different board members. We've talked about that, so.
I know OSU's been working on that for years to get better signage and slowly but surely they've been getting there. But it's never ending. So on signage though, has anyone seen the new street signs? They look, I think they look really nice, so that's.
Thank you so much for everything you do, Nancy.
Anything, other questions for Nancy? No. Other business, we took care of our July meeting. Is there any other, other business anyone wants to bring up?
I'll just mention that I met with Fred, the Planning Director last week about several items. One was potential code changes relative to density. And I think staff is looking at that, but it's at least a year away. I also talked to him about Dillon. I'm trying to find out who makes design decisions on the Dillon. And I'll just tell you what my concern is. My concern is without an overall plan for the site, the temporary improvements may be temporary because they'll have to be redone, which is expensive. And, um, I just think this project has been totally mismanaged and maybe not managed because I can't find anybody who claims to be the manager. So there's a person who is a construction manager, but not a design manager. And there's just, I just have a lot of questions. When Elektra and I walked that site several months ago, she raised a question about security. There's no, there'll be no lighting there. It's a great hangout for kids in the evening. Uh, when my daughter was in high school, they hung out at the pool, called themselves the Pooligans. I can see that happening at, at the Dillon at some point in time. And there just needs to be some more attention to what's going on there. And I don't know where to start, to tell you the truth. And, uh, um, you know, I mentioned to Fred, if the city doesn't have enough money, this temp, this temporary improvement is the permanent improvement. And we didn't get landscaping, we didn't get street lighting, we didn't get the sidewalk improved. We didn't get parking lot trees, we didn't get parking lot landscaping and lighting. We wouldn't allow a private developer to do this. And to me, the city ought to be setting an example, not, um, if they can enforce their own code, their code against developers, they certainly ought to be an example of public improvements. And so that's my speech for today. Any other business for today?
I would, I would follow that up with the discussion on the Dillon that when I walked the, um, when I walked the Dillon with the mayor, and we talked about it as a future land bank for workforce housing, that it is positioned in that way. It's been cleared, um, you know, it's similar to the LaFunt with just slight more improvements. But it could be a site. And we did discuss this too, when you and I walked it too. And when you and I walked it too, about it being a potential site for future housing. So I hope that it gets used at its best use, but I, I, I understand the concerns.
Okay, we ready to adjourn? Take a motion? Barb moves to adjourn a second. Ann, all those in favor? See you in August. Thank you.